Our NOC number that goes to, so it goes to a different business support group. There's our NOC, which we provided that, that's available 24/7. You also have Brandon's cell number, my cell number. Reed, our tech manager, John Breaker, our general manager. I think there's a list of about seven or eight contacts. Chuck Elrod is our engineer. But we have email and cell numbers for all those folks. Our business number, we have people there from seven till seven. We have our NOCs 24/7. And then we've got our folks, you know, between the seven of us that you can reach out to. And our email address is included in that, too.
Well Jake Dennis, you put the time into this as to your recommendation?
That's my recommendation, sir.
I've got a question. So when the piece of fiber gets cut between here and Hayti and somebody's trying to call the police station or fire station, somebody will still be able to get through it?
They will on 911. Now, we do have some diverse routes, but we're not fully redundant. So depending on where that cut is, they may be able to route her out through the phone switch. You know, here in Kennet, we have a handoff there at the AT&T Telco handoff. But depending on where that cut, our network is not fully redundant. There are rings in different parts of the network. I'm not sure what the city's network is, but we will be using part of their infrastructure that ties all the city together where that, that's all redundant or not. But depending on where that is, and that goes into, you know, any repair time, if there's a cut in one location, I'm not going to say that it could not be down for a little bit. Now, you should still have all your number one services, but to call directly the local number, it could be affected.
The problem would be the same regardless of the provider, though, right?
Most likely.
That just happened about a month ago when we were down. Internet was down, everybody was down.
Motion on the floor to approve this agreement, which will be a 16-month term. The cost would be, let's put $2,450 per month for 16 months with a hundred dollar extra charge for four fax lines. So it could end up being $2,550 per month.
And you say that's guaranteed to be back up and running within four hours if something happens?
On any minor repairs. I mean, if it's, you know, a natural disaster or a major cut, it could be longer than that. I think there's some language in there that addresses that as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, wait, one second. It's not in the budget, should it?
I've got a question, if I may. I'm in favor of it. I want to upgrade as long as it falls as your wishes within our budget. I've not seen any figures on what it's going to do to our monthly budget or annual budget for phones as far as the fire department.
I think we talked about moving it to administration and it wouldn't be in anybody's budget but administration.
All those wheels into one.
But we would pull the telephone out of all budgets, too.
Yeah.
So that's my only concern. I'm for upgrading the phone system as long as we can do it within the budget. We've been ordered to stay there.
We would need to amend the budget here shortly thereafter.
I mean, we're over on telephone as it is right now, but we knew that we were going to be making a change, so.
And the one thing there, just that number that's in there does not include taxes. So if you need that number, I can get that number, but that is, that's our service fee for the phone system and the services.
We get that?
I mean, that's, you said that through a different bridge.
Not future. You do have tax exempt status. I don't know, you know, if that includes some of the other things like 911, but we certainly look at your certificate, be able to give you a number.
Is that over state taxes?
Uh, there's, there's, there's both.
It's still going to be cheaper than what we had been paying, even with paying the taxes.
All right. Any other questions? Motion to approve this 16-month terms. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Two against. Motion passes. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you Jake for doing this, looking into this.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Settlement release and agreement for animal control. This is for the highest damage from the owner. It looks like there will be a $3,055 check if the council approves this settlement. That's deducting the $1,000. That's deducting $1,000 from it for our deduction. So $3,055 is the amount we'll get in form of check if you all approve. Is there a motion to approve this settlement?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Signing of AWAS grant paperwork?
There's really nothing to sign. It's a, it's a letter that's supposed to go out regarding adhesment and there's really no action for it.
We're finished new business. We're finished unfinished business.
Something for new business. Do you want to bring it up now?
That's fine, okay.
Okay. I've been asked to bring up to the council what we'd like to, if we would like to do anything about mosquito spraying. I've been asked, those towns around us are doing it by air. And if there's something that we can do in the city, can we start doing it?
I didn't think we had any.
A mosquito tag.
Where do you live?
I don't know. That's our issue.
Well, the city, Hayti funds theirs $5 a month on their mortgage.
A lot of utilities.
A lot of communities are starting to do this. City Jonesboro, City Hayti have done it, things like this, did something, we want to start exploring. Right now, I mean, just to be honest, mosquito does not work. It really doesn't. I'm not trying to put anybody down. I'm not trying to be.
It just makes me a little mad when you do this. I know live, third one, Jonesboro, they use a company called Vector, the contract. And I've heard a lot of good comments with many of those communities.
Well, we looked at the total somewhere about.
Expensive.
Very expensive.
But that's what they were talking about adding on to the utility bill that would, that would pay that throughout the course of the year. All those kids are only around for three or four months. All year long, you'd be paying to make that difference.
I agree.
I always share my personal experience with spraying mosquitoes. Back in the early mid-eighties, I walked out of my house early morning to go to work. One came right over the house and I got covered. Went back in, took a shower, redressed, went to work. About a week later, I spent a week in the hospital. Reaction to that chemical. I had no idea what they were spraying. I hope it wasn't Asian orange, but. My personal experience with using aerial spraying, I'm all stirred up whatever, but soon as I got around.
I think what they're using now is a lot better than what they used 20 years ago, 30 years ago. I've talked to one local sprayer. He does some, but he does it not when it comes to traffic. Although other cities, there's, this may be it now, they're doing it. He's something that's worth exploring. If we want to do this, we want to. But I maybe too like this year's understanding, but maybe have a program in place for next time.
Would the people be going to pay for it? How would, how would we have to adjust that carry to add it on to see, I guess?
Have to be voted on.
Would have to be voted on?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's how we have to fund it, but we might have another way. I don't know.
Well, we don't have the money in the budget, so.
I, and my memory is well, but here about six, seven years ago, maybe, we would have heard hearing quotes about 125,000 for a year contract. Maybe well off, maybe you, like you were in some of that conversation, but.
Yeah, but like you looked up most of the quotes on that. I didn't call the people and get those.
Yeah, it's like 100, I think 120, I mean, those prices are.
Seemed like, seemed like the requirement of twin-engine planes and stuff like that. So, you know, it's not just a simple issue to deal with.
But it's not to say we can't look into it. You think there's support there for this?
I think a lot of question that you usually want to know, why we don't participate with other towns around us or, I don't know anybody that likes them.
You all want to look further into this?
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to hurt to look into it.
Yeah. We can place a few calls and do a little bit.
Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
I have one more thing. I have a letter from a resident, Mr. Gore. I'm sorry. He lives at 605 East Fifth Street. He has an alley that runs into his house on the east side. It's growing up really bad. He wants to go with the council and vacate that property and let him put a fence around. He wants it cleaned up. It's growing up really bad. It's not being maintained. Obviously, rain is already covered up and it's hard to clean up all the alley. He would like the council maybe take some stairs and let him put a cancel and clean it up.
Is he on the end of the alley or the middle of it?
Actually, the alley starts in the front of his yard and runs the length of his yard.
Does that walk access for anyone else?
I would overlook that. It doesn't look like, it doesn't look like right now any city utilities or even a trash truck can go into it.
Why does he need to put up a fence, right?
Well, he has a lot of foot traffic coming through there. They pull trash out and it is growing up the vegetation. And people walk through there, they aggravate these dogs and walk through there and not need luck to have it set up. And things like putting up a fence will stop it. Have we, is it done by an ordinance carrier or is it? Yes. Yes, first thing that needs to do is make sure there aren't utilities in there. And they have, we have to have a, have to have a public hearing. Their procedure of it would start that, to start the process like the alley. Will you just form a motion? I'd say so, yes. I'm like a motion would begin proceedings to facilitate the other.
What was the address?
I'm sorry. What was that address? 605 East Fifth Street. And he understands that if sometime in the future, city does need the access, maybe he is going to make the fence where he can move it.
Adesment. Leave an adesment.
Yeah. Then he can, you know, put it back when the work is done, if it, if needed.
Would your motion be just for that one address or is it for the entire alley?
I think Gore would look the entire length of the alley, how far it runs. I just know most of the back of his property, as far as, further south, I'm not sure. He's the only one to that, because that's the only part that's really built up.
Your motion is for the address.
Would that property have to be cleaned up before utilities could be checked?
I think we ought to know where the utilities are.
I can, I can, we can find the utility.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of that dig, right? You know, every time you're going to do something, call them.
Well, I mean, but there should be something.
There's, there's still.
Somebody, somebody should know where it is without having to physically see it.
Mr. Wilson does have a motion on the floor for the, the address to vacate the.
605.
605 East Fifth Street. Is there a second? We have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll start the proceedings. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. So we're moving to unfinished business. I'm amazed. Vote of opposing rezoning of block two and block five at the LC Wilson subdivision. And I was not prepared to support me this.
Okay. What, uh, there's been a request for rezoning from R1, single-family residential to B2 general business and its property behind the Eagles. There has been the, the planning and zoning recommended that the rezoning be approved. There has been protest made by more than 30% of the adjoining landowners, which means that to approve this and it takes two-thirds vote of the, of the council. So, first reading. An ordinance rezoning a certain parcel from R1, single-family residential to B2 general business, a part of block five of Dr. LC Wilson subdivision and a lot of Eagle subdivision, and block two of Eagle subdivision number one in the city of Kennet, Dunkland County, Missouri.
Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Actually, just approving the, the reading.
Approve the reading?
Yes.
There are most to approve the reading, not the ordinance, but just strictly the reading.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. I'll slam the motion.
Okay, second reading. An ordinance rezoning a certain parcel from R1, single-family residential to B2 general business, a part of block five of, of Dr. LC Wilson subdivision and all of block two of Eagle subdivision number one in the city of Kennet, Dunkland County, Missouri. And again, it will take seven affirmative votes because of our protest from adjoining landowners.
Okay, now this will be approving the ordinance. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as read?
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Now it's time for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Do we know what's going to be done with this if it's changed? Is there a plan for what's going to happen?
Many stories.
They can do anything with it, can't they?
Anything within B2, yes.
Yeah.
The discussion with many stories.
Building, what I'm standing on. Their, their plan is complete, yes.
Any other questions for discussion? This will be a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes. No.
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 Five, four. Ordinance passes.
Passes. We'll move into, are the walk trails seems to be going right?
We've got issues. Well, we've got, we've got problems.
Okay, let's discuss them. I've got a bill that needs to lose, so we start walking soon.
We opened bids last Tuesday on the hiking and biking trail. To simplify things, it's one project, but we put it out in two separate bids to cut out the margin that if any one company bid both, they get a markup on the concrete or the asphalt. So, but the asphalt, sorry, let's do the concrete. The concrete sidewalks from Palace Theater to the old radio shack at Frisco. We're placing the sidewalk on Electric Street from behind Middle School to Frisco. And a new sidewalk starting on Compress at Samuel Health on the north side of Russell and going to Floyd, that came in under budget. Okay? Asphalt trail itself, starting at First Street and going to the North Pipe Pass, came in over budget. MODOC will let us separate those and award one and reject the other. So I would like to make a recommendation that we award the concrete contract to Nip Kelly Equipment Company out of Cape Girardeau for 197,400, or $749. This is an 80% paid by MODOC, 20% city that we voted on, I don't know, 18 months ago or something of that nature to do this grant.
So we need to make a motion to accept the bid for the concrete. I mean, we'll keep the asphalt separate. I make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. And this would be for a total of, just use some rough figures, $39,600 being paid from the city money.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't break that out on that.
Rough figures, yes. Any discussions regarding this bid acceptance? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay? We'll have a second bid to accept.
The second bid is on asphalt over lane. And it came in quite a bit over budget. Came in at $339,000, $330,000, some change, which is approximately $80,000 over budget. So I would recommend that we reject that bid.
With reject, does that mean that the trail is, is, is all?
No. If we do that, then I will ask that we, council approve rebidding the asphalt trail after we work on the specs.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second to turn down the bid, not accept it, on the basis that Mr. Porter's going to, to redo the specs to make this more, for.
When we put in the grant originally, I had inputs from contractors and stuff like that to do this. Then it went to the engineers, but I had to submit to the engineers and MODOC a cost figure on the trail. Well, it's been a long period of time. The engineers did some work on it and then it went to MODOC. Their engineers did some work on it. It didn't change the trail, but it changed a lot of the specifications in there after they got to it. So we think that we won't have any trouble at all bringing this back down. I spent most of the day on the phone today talking to contractors and Smith and Company, our engineers. We think by tweaking what we, what we're requesting, that we can get this in under bid this next time.
Okay. Motion on the floor? Everybody remember what it is? We're going to turn down bid?
Reject the bid.
Reject the bid. Yeah, I mean, that would be the one motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And what kind of timeframe do you have?
Uh, I, I think if you would authorize us to rebid it, before the next council meeting, we'll be able to put it out for bids.
Is there a motion to rebid?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the work on it. All righty. Mayor reports. And I will do this in conjunction with the finance committee. Ms. Ross, Mayor's Chair. My report is basically finances, along with Ms. Rossner. We'll, we'll share this together. Basically, the city, the revenue is up in the city, which is good because we spent a whole lot of money last year. So we need to make that money back up, set it back for, for when we need some, need it. Overall, for the month of July, the budgets, the department budgets have been in line. There is two budgets, though, that are not in line. The animal control department is down, is over budget by $216. Close enough to where that can work out month over month. One budget that is significantly over budget is the police department budget. After taking out for the grant money that is reimbursed and factoring in the housing authority, we're $11,000 over budget. Looking at the payroll for this month, we're on that same trajectory. For this time next month, we'll be reporting the same thing as it looks right now. We all agree during the budget process that we will, anything goes over, council has to approve it, otherwise it's not going to be expensive. We're going to be concurrent. It's not in the budget, therefore, I ask a couple of questions. One, is where would the council like to pull the $11,000 if it went over budget? Or would you like to amend the budget? And two, what would the council, you know, is there anything else the council wishes to do as far as the financial, the correctness?
Well, some of it, I mean, it's like the telephone, right? Layover probably on that. So that's going to go down, right?
Telephone's not enough, though.
Well, okay, but I'm saying that, a lot of the things, the training that was layover, that's not going to be that every month. It's over on, if you just prorate it out monthly, but.
I mean, what were the, what was the issues? I mean, why?
I think it was just salaries.
There was $6,000 overtime for that month.
It's just salaries.
Dollars.
$1,000 dollars.
Overtime.
But this is the same thing I had the last year. I made a point, we were going to stay within our budget.
So I mean, is there a solution to eliminate the overtime?
We have, we have talked to you about this. You know, we have, prior to the meeting, so he's aware of the situation. The words in his mouth, but he said that this can be corrected. Right? This can be corrected? I want to come out of your mouth and I might.
All right. I told you it was just some salaries only. Okay, we didn't get a full-time officer apart now, you know. Although we have that, there's still a train. You know, so probably another month, they'll be ready to be telephoned. You know, put in a car, which will fill those slots up, which will bring salary down. Also, we still have two people on sick leave. And one we're going to address there, he's off vacation, he's sick, that's completely, he's not going to put on the, and then there's the other one, the city no longer paying him. And, but we still have one on sick leave, maybe. I don't know how long that's going to last, I think November anyway. So we're having to pay for that. Because of the fact we couldn't bring vacations, that people had vacation the first part of the year because we're short-handed. And I hate to keep saying short-handed, I gotta get away from that. And now they're starting to take it. We have seven officers, this month, taken vacations and three gift vouchers. And we've got one in match regard doing his extra duties. So that's compensating for some of that. We still got to make up, and we still got to make up for, so we're still being short. So gradually we're bringing it down and I've got to bring it down. I make a commitment that I would work with the council. And I will get it down. But it's just going to take just a time, you know, a little more time, a couple more months, and we should start seeing the gradual decrease of it. Full-time officers would help. You've got full-time people, that's less, that's less overtime. Overtime's what's going to get you. So we're still working on that. But operating it.
But we still have to, we still have to.
We can come up with this.
Pre the amend, the amended part of police department going over and the animal control department.
Why did animal control go over?
I'm sorry, like, because I had to.
Sorry, go ahead, Kenee. Why did animal control go over?
Is that what you were going to say?
Now that's one, well, what's your recommendation for, for them to do this? I mean, is it like, do this every month?
Well, I mean, it sounds like in a month's time, they're going to have a officer and a half, you know, fully installed in, on the street. So that'll cut down on some of it. So that, I mean, that's kind of what I wanted to know.
Thing is, is we got to make this, you know, we got to bring it down to where we're on par for the budget. But again, it's $11,000 over, so it's got to be made up. Somewhere down there to keep it from being well over for the end of the year.
Were you just saying salaries, though? I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
Okay.
Were you just saying, are you just addressing $11,000?
No, that's their overall budget. That's a line item. Those are total budget.
Okay, it's $11,000.
For the month of July. Now salaries, what I was saying about salaries is, is we have had one payroll cycle with the city for the month of August. The total current payroll is $29,000. Just going to use round numbers. They're allotted $49,000. So you can see we're, we're going close to $60,000 and we're only supposed to spend $49,000. That's just an salary only column. So it's, it's.
So what was your recommendation, Diane? Or do you have?
We need to have a fundraiser. We need to have a fundraiser. Now, my recommendation for, and we really didn't discuss that, we ran out of time. But my recommendation for this particular time.